I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried. Before I forget, about every couple of months I get somebody who tells me we can't hear you. So, put your speaker closer, wear it on your neck if you need to pick up and speak directly into it so that people can hear. Some of us they can hear and some of us speak softer and they can't hear. Mr. Shaker?
Yes, I would like to introduce our unbelievable and talented student rep that we have, Daniel Castillo Barahona. I want him to have an opportunity to talk to you guys and introduce himself so you get to know the great young man will be sitting in on our board meeting.
Thank you, I'm Daniel, I'm a senior here in high school. I wanted to do this because I really feel like I could really represent the student voice here at Semasco. I'm really involved with a lot of clubs and other activities here, so I'm really excited to work with you guys and thank you for being here today.
Thank you for being here.
I should note the superintendent is at, the superintendent's conference, but she's here with us listening to the meeting and available with questions that elevate to her level. But she should be Mr. Hiltz and Mr. Shaker will handle everything needed. Mr. Hiltz, did you have anything that you wanted to highlight up within your report?
Yes, something that's not in the report that came through after that WASB reached out and they are interested in hearing the presentation that I provided last January to the board. So, we'll be going out to the board convention and presenting it up there.
Mr. Shaker?
Hard to follow that, but nothing outside of the agenda, but I do want to just take a moment to really acknowledge the efforts of our staff for their preparation in this school year and building relationships with our students and getting routines in place and all the work that they've done this year. For our students, we were challenging them to be uncommon, to do things that separate themselves, to be exceptional and go above and beyond. And then also in a couple of weeks, we have our homecoming game and I just wanted to give a huge shout out to all the staff that devote a lot of time. Even when we go there, we enjoy the football game and the tailgate and all that stuff that happens. There was a tremendous amount of work done behind closed doors where our staff are meeting with students and planning and organizing our week and I just want to give a huge shout out to them. It's awesome what they do for our students and all that they put into each and every child here. So, thank you to our staff and thank you to the students for a great start to the school year.
Thank you. You all have gifted, talented reports and A and B reports, so could direct your questions to the superintendent on that. The superintendent may even have a report tonight, she's been kept us updated though via her emails to us recently. I don't get anything. On committee reports, I think she reported to the communications committee that we're looking at in most recent newspaper. And also decided that we would not publish the 100-year book because we're so far off from the 100-year celebration. Phil, when you grounds, I think was that mostly above the tower or not above later?
The tower of long range.
We'll move to old business then, I think Mr. Hiltz has something on the elementary student handbook?
Yes, we did take a look. The big change in the updated PMO that you provided in your packet, to be consistent with the middle school and high school, we changed our, we had an acronym called PCDs for personal communication device. We changed that to ECDs and we're consistent with middle school and high school, just on electronic communication devices. For the health section, I'm going to continue working with our school nurse and as we get any updates, we will send out those notifications to our newsletter. And then late this semester, early next semester, I'll post people again and we'll get a forward here.
Okay, that's it.
That the school nurse reached out to me and like showed me the like the big graph, just like physician type nurse level stuff and we kind of took a look at it. So, it makes sense looking at that because that's kind of, yeah, so I think more to come. I think she's doing a lot of hard work and kind of having to update that, but looking at just from with the nursing leadership and then with the physician days on it, I think they're doing a lot of work and I think that will benefit the students.
Thank you.
Sorry, this very rule we need approval on those changes. I brought it back and I mean we can wait another month.
It's not on production.
Okay.
It's on here, so technically we need to bring it back.
I have to wait until we do that.
Approval. Before the board discusses the 911 tower, there are some representatives of the county here that wish to speak. Do you all wish to speak? One of you wish to speak?
Oh, for the tower, I worry you're here to speak unless you guys have questions for us or have questions in regards to the correspondence we included, so.
So, you had the draft, the letter that Randy received from the county with their proposals. Her recommendation is for lease option so that the property doesn't ever permanently get separated from the school district. That local lease option, and as you said, it's been five or 10 years, it's all satellite, we prioritize whatever money we got back to the county. So, from their discussion?
Lease option is a hundred years.
I think it's a hundred year lease.
You didn't, the option, I mean if, I mean if something happens, however long it is being useful, I mean it's in here that could be taken down.
Yeah, who's at the county's expense?
Who can speak? Jerry, who can speak for a while? Thank you.
The only question I got, so if, who carries the load of the expense that the tower has to be just?
The county.
Even though if you, because if you were to separate and go to a different technology, the county, is a tower always belonging to county? Or is a tower not go to another company? Because technology may come up that the county doesn't need the tower anymore, but there are other services on the tower that need to be utilized. So, I mean, the county would no longer be in the tower business, but the tower company still would own the tower. Correct?
Can I address you or?
Yeah, feel free, we're friends.
Sorry, just for introductions, I can't have it for our money to share and again if you give a real deep detail, I have our attorney here as well. Again, with the lease, those are the types of details that we need to work out. Again, when we had specified our preference, obviously we specified that the purchase would buy you cleaner. And again, the reason why we were doing that is simply because of the arrangement that we have with EnSite. So, again, under our other towers, we're buying the site, EnSite slash vertical bridge is actually building the tower and maintaining the tower. So, that's, and then as part of the arrangement, the county has the right to use that tower in perpetuity in terms of for 911 communication. So, with the lease arrangement, we obviously have the same type of arrangement, but obviously we'll have to build in some additional clauses, right? In terms of like you said, if in 25 years, the technology changes and we don't need that tower, right? Then how do, you know, how does that change the agreement, right? If we pull on our equipment and what's the expectations of EnSite? So, again, I think that'll be, we'll have to go back because that might be a concern for them, right? In terms of, you know, if we're going to change those terms, that may still make it a little bit more complicated. We're willing to do it, I'm not saying that, but that's why when we had talked with the facilities committee, I see a lease from our standpoint, our standpoint makes it much more complicated, so.
So, under a lease, the school district is still responsible for that property. If something happened to that property, you know, wind, I mean trees go down or something like that, the school is still responsible for maintaining the property, correct?
Well, again, there's, there's different things in regards to insurance coverage, right? So, we own the property, we're, we take on all that liability and all that as a lease. Obviously, there's liability clauses that would probably be within the lease term itself, but obviously as a lease, there's going to have to be some type of coverage you're going to have to take on.
See, I, I think we don't, I don't think we can answer the question, might sell the lease because we don't know what the lease term, we don't know what all those things in the lease are. That's why I added that we have a draft lease so that we can have all of that information and then make a decision.
Right, I mean these are factors that we have to take into consideration. I mean, if you own that property, then you are responsible for, we have to keep maintaining that property. If we lease it, then we are responsible for it.
I mean, there's ways you can sell the property and then if the tower's no longer used and that automatically would be back to us. If we sell the property, that's a lease, then we are free from all any type of present, like certain kinds of stuff, other than one of the towers no longer used.
And the lease can be written if they are responsible for maintaining the property, such a triple net lease and rental, they're responsible for, the candidate is responsible for everything.
With, with, I guess, again, with the offer, the purchase, the one thing that was discussed at the facilities committee, we did include that now. You know, we had put down that, obviously within the agreement, we record a title for the first right of refusal and we just put down now that under the first right of refusal, you could purchase it back for a dollar. Whatever we purchased it for, we're buying it, let's put it at hand, we can take it back for a dollar or?
I guess I just leave more to someone, I'm going to get it right before you do the letter list. Because no matter what, if you're leasing it, there's something that happened where you're still going to be named in a lawsuit. Because you're still probably, if, if, if they were to fall over, crying, some of the towels, some of his car, or somebody's injured, some great attorney, not them against attorneys, they're going to, they're going to find their way back home. But this place is really open home by the school. Bingo, bingo, we got two big blank pockets. We got the county has big pockets and the school district has big pockets and we can go and sue everybody, okay? As opposed to just, anyway, that's the stuff I mean we look at when it's all a problem.
I guess my question would be, do we need some advice from legal counsel?
Well, this has to, yes, that's why we're not voting on it, right? Because it has to go to legal.
Hey, right, I think we need legal counsel advice on sell versus. Close and how is that? Because it sounds all simple, we live for 100 years and we put ourselves on it, but as opposed to me, I'm not holding that. Sell comes for 100 years, I mean, come back to us, we're going to stop using it. We don't own it, then they give it back to us for a dollar for a pension, then there's much more credit.
So, are the directions to advise the superintendent to talk, to get legal advice, close and highs versus lease? The, the, you want to know this by what? Your timeline or time?
Well, our biggest concern is, well, our concern is your timeline, so really what you're told is that you need to have it on your agenda to get authorization to proceed with one of those two options. So, our biggest, our timeline is we'd like to, ideally would be to have it at least lined up or know that it's vital by tip of the year, otherwise I have to find a different site.
Here, if, if we elect to sell the property, we need to have it on the annual meeting agenda for the authorization from the community to sell property. If the option is to lease, it doesn't matter. So, she could, she could bring this back in October to the October meeting, we could decide and. Tasha, how far out from the school board meeting is the annual meeting?
The annual meeting is October 22nd, so it's a week after the October.
Okay, so there's time to notice it in the annual meeting, in the meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so the direction is for the superintendent to gather information from legal, lease versus sell, sell versus lease.
Again, if you don't mind, just one last thing, I mean, they, the committee did ask us for our preferences and again, we're in a, we're in a position where we'll work with either option. But again, from our standpoint, some of the things we brought up, we concur with, but also, again, not that the lease is hard, but a lease of 100 years, I mean someone has to manage and remember that lease for 100 years versus a title with a report in on it for the first right of refusal, knowing that will come back. So, no matter what those lease terms are, you know, someone's got to manage in that part of it. So, again, that's why we specified in the letter, we prefer purchase, but again, if you feel that it's better for the school to maintain the property, we're still looking for that partnership either way. And that's why from our standpoint, I know we went way back, there was some discussion on, you know, we put in $28,000, which we feel is like market price. And there was some discussion, well, should be done for a dollar. Our biggest concern is whatever we can do to make sure we build the community partnership, we're not trying to take advantage of the school or anything. It's truly a partnership and making sure that we have a place to establish 911 communications. With the added benefit of knowing that if there's a tower there, you're going to have a lot better cell coverage and that will penetrate this building a lot better. So, there's a benefit to that as well, so.
And I think as a point of information, the land, the area of the land we're talking about is a 100 by 100, so it's basically about a quarter of an acre. And it's a free standing power, it's not a guy wired power, so it's going to be contained within that 100 by 100 foot.
Okay, so we will get legal counsel now. I anticipate legal counsel having a lot of questions about lease terms, so she'll want to talk to the county attorney. That's why else would this county give us the lease to give to our attorney so that we don't incur a lot of back and forth between attorneys and our attorney has lease terms to look at? So, if we can accomplish that, that would be great, but.
Again, I guess, I guess we need to know the way, because again, a lease, when you're saying this generated lease, that's an entirely different, I mean, a triple net lease for a storefront is entirely different than a 100-year lease for a tower. And all the various very clauses, maintenance and all that kind of stuff, so it's, it's an entirely different beast.
So, certainly our attorney is going to have questions on all of those, so she may get in contact with your attorney.
Okay, I'm using, I think at this point, all we need is a market attorney, approach the panel of business versus. And then if they say lease, then we can get into, I'll think of getting all of that.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Right, and then we can go back at your next meeting.
Keep it moving along.
Right, thank you.
Keep it moving along.
You come up long enough, you can become a resident of the last.
See, there you go.
We have the second legal officer policies, we can go to review and ask about this before we'll all those updates.
I will move to approve the second reading of the policies and the list.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried. Do you have any impact this is a meeting report that you say?
Yes, there were several of us last night, they have the presentation by Ann Chapman on school finance. Lisa was there, Tasha was there, Randy and myself. It was a very interesting presentation I saw and Tasha and I were talking before the meeting and I think it was high opening for a lot of people who were there. They had no idea how the funding formula worked, I heard comments as I was leaving about that and they had no idea how the voucher system worked. So, I did not check the invisible website, but I think there may be something on there, so if you want to look at that, the invisible website, that would be an option.
I did, I did wish, I did wish they would have been a little more exact. I ran into some people in the coffee shop this morning, we talked about it. You know, she gave them like big state numbers, 1.4 million new education is what she discussed with us and then she gave overall numbers on how the state was constantly doing as far as reading and math. I think having been more, if they could have been more exact to show that the county really does better than the state, especially Semasco. That people don't think, well, we're spending all this money, but we're really almost below the state average in a lot of those things, it would have been helpful. And then when they talk about, you know, all the money, it would have been good if they had a slide geared toward what Turner was saying for the end. This is our special education budget, this is how much we got from the state last year, this is how much we're going to get, this is how much comes out of our one hand. And more specifics like that, I think would have been more eye opening for people.
At least I can certainly include those in our annual meeting report and in the presentation when we do budget in October.
Well, I agree.
But at least our, our residents can have that information about us.
I'll regret, but for the whole, I think in a presentation like that, filling down and getting it more specific to the locality would have been really eye opening for those people.
Also, we've talked a lot about the state report card and the CUTS score and there has been a group, Jerry, I know this is a favorite topic of yours, that has been looking at these CUTS scores and this panel of educators voted to recommend changes to those scores, essentially raising them by one point, which really is a minor change. And there have been a lot of criticism about this that more than deal. So, I don't know where that go, but that's the latest on those. And then WASB as well as other groups are encouraging everybody to contact our legislators about the rehiring of newitons to help schools with their staffing shortages. This was on a assembly committee agenda and the bill was pulled instead of dealing with it. And the rumor is that there are still some in the legislature who feel this is double dipping and they don't want to go ahead with it.
So, you're happy with it at all? Because the, the reason it got pulled is Jacque, Jacque presented the bill that included rehiring police officers and firefighters, but didn't include teachers. So, they're okay with that, but not the teachers, or it's just no double dipping?
It's the teachers that were what, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So, more to come on that, Representative Kitchen?
I mean, I think sometimes I lose my WASB, do they, do they have something where they set out and say, here, you should contact your legislators about this topic and give you a?
There hasn't been one that I have seen.
It would be so great if they could develop that system.
Sometimes it is amused, but not this time. Yeah, it makes it very easy.
It makes it very easy, because we're all lazy, we can all actually do it, but oh, I got to look up their addresses, how do I get, what do I put in the letter?
Yeah, I can remind Chris on that.
If you want to do that, maybe have a draft email that you can send, you can customize to yourself, you can have the addresses up.
Yeah, I could send something out to Representative Kitchen, in particular, to break the keys for it, okay?
I think she has, she has sent something to you.
Yes.
I've sent something to you, so anybody else that wants to send it, if you support it, or if you don't support it.
No, yeah.
Well, it seems like they've heard, their schedule is still down.
Doesn't hurt that.
Maybe to show where our, our schedule is, still available.
Well, I think the superintendents need with them on a monthly basis, we can ask.
But since I'm going to the study, I hope you are willing to come.
We can ask the superintendent, we can ask the superintendent to ask, well, I mean, they need the kitchens, I don't know that they need the Jacque, but we can ask. Well. I guess we could send them an invitation for, you know, sometime far out, like September, January.
I think we should, I think we should ask them, of these, you know, when we meet, when are these dates are you available? These are, we know our dates, those are our dates, which ones are you available, what they have, which one they attend, as opposed to?
I will, um.
Doesn't hurt that.
I will attack, who do you want to invite?
What's that?
Who do you want to invite?
I think we can invite kitchen, not, not the same baby.
Okay. Okay, go prepare invitation.
Joel Kitchen is also looking at math improvement, looking at a math screener, kind of following the path of what went on with reading. And he's also looking at a bill to make it illegal to fly drones over schools without permission because of privacy concerns and safety concerns. And also looking at a declining enrollment bill, particularly to look at consolidation and how consolidation could be easier for school districts because of the declining enrollment. His question is, can we afford 411 school districts anymore in the state of Wisconsin? So, that's out there. The mail rate has been an issue, we know that, we talked about that, we really talked about consolidation and that's one issue that they're looking to address. At the federal level, nobody really knows what's going on there, it keeps changing day to day and it's pretty hard to keep track of it. But one thing that I did find interesting, because we have been designated a Blue Diamond School in the municipal, that program has now been eliminated. So, WASB has received 20 resolutions from school districts around the state and the Policy and Wells Committee will be looking at those the end of September and then again in November. And we'll be going on those at the elders in January in Milwaukee. Carrie Bowman from the Gibraltar District is a representative on that committee and very enthusiastic about that group. Some of the things that are on there are kind of interesting. Federal funding is one of the resolutions on there, I guess of that. There's a resolution opposing referendum restrictions, which some legislators have supported. There's one on universal free meals, one on support for DDI. And there's one on the school report card processes. And there's one opposing and one supporting decoupling. In other words, taking the voucher money and taking that right out of the general purpose revenue rather than impacting the aid of certain school districts. It doesn't impact us much, but it does for some of the districts where they have a large number of voucher schools. Green Bay, for instance, now is putting on their tax bill, the amount of aid that the Green Bay public schools are losing to need a voucher school. And more cities are trying to do that. If it's decoupled, that will be hidden and it will be hidden in the general purpose revenue. So, there's a lot of contradiction about that now. So there's a lot of controversy about that now. So never default. Thank you, legislature.
Mr. Warren, I had to get to get our hand stations in this school, and I believe that it's open now to require that nationally.
We will either.
You were later.
You were, not maybe at the school, but I think we're still a lot of Marylanders that.
Congratulations. We will hear now about the global trip from Mrs. Vanderpump, Mrs. Loackey.
Mrs. Loackey, sorry. My name is Ms. Loackey. This is my second year at Sebastopol.
Mrs. Vanderpump. This is my 10th year at Sebastopol.
So we're here to bring you a global trip proposal for 2027 to Germany, Italy, and Switzerland. Just this last summer, I traveled to Ireland with our student, Dos Henderson, and one of my former students, Lane Landrick. I partnered with EF for this, and they are Education First Tours. I'm looking at partnering with them again for this upcoming tour in 2027. Part of why we choose EF is they're family owned and operated since 1965. They have a mission of opening the world through education. They offer 17 products spanning across language learning, cultural exchange, academic achievement, and educational travel. They employ 27,500 educators and 24,500 office staff within their 612 offices and schools in 50 countries worldwide. And they also aid us in on the ground support. So we'll talk more about that a little bit later.
So basically, they know what they're doing. That's why we partner with them.
They're one of the leading leaders in global education. EF puts safety first, second, and third. So when we were in Ireland, thankfully, never had to use that. Hopefully, we don't in this trip either. But they have a safety incident and response team available 24/7, 365 days a year, and they react quickly if travelers need help. So at that point, our tour director that would be assigned if we were to approve this trip tonight, they ultimately help us get in contact with that. If for some reason a tour director were to get sick, they immediately fill that in with a new tour director. So our trip is unhindered the entire time we're traveling. They have unnatural presence, they have staff on the ground in 115 countries. All the blue dots on the screen are places they have in the EF office. So wherever we're traveling in Europe, they have quite a few surrounding offices to where we'd be going. The best in the industry experience, they are ready to whatever happens. And so we travel with them. Through Ireland, I learned of this whole process. So our tour director meets us, as soon as we arrive at the airport, they hold up this beautiful sign for us to follow them. They bring us to our meeting location, we meet our bus driver for the first time, they help us load the bus, and they get us off to our first hotel to drop our luggage. They have an extensive knowledge of our destination, where we're going. They manage everything from hotel check-ins, they even emailed me weeks before our trip when we left for Ireland this year. And ultimately, getting, making sure our hotels are all ready for us, they take care of everything for the entire group of kids that are on the bus with us. We traveled to Ireland this last year with kids from Random Lake High School, which is my friend, Rick, who he rap, he teaches there, Ag Education. And then we also met up with groups from Arkansas and Florida on this trip. So we were consolidated down to a bus of 50 people. And so she, our tour director, Audrey, for Ireland, took care of everything for us. It was amazing, an amazing experience. And they teach from the heart, honestly, delivering engaging commentary. The entire time we rode on the bus in Ireland, she talked about the surrounding area, told stories, it was an absolutely amazing experience. So why is global competence and travel-based learning necessary to prepare students for their futures? We look at tech literacy, social and emotional intelligence, problem solving, adaptability. When we travel worldwide, these students are gaining that human connection. They're meeting kids from across our country and across the world, and obviously where we're going. And that makes them better problem solvers. They solve their problems immediately. They can adapt to new cultures when we're visiting these places. It's an absolutely amazing experience. No problem. So our students learn communication effectiveness. Obviously, when we traveled to Ireland this last year, they spoke the same language, they still, I mean, they do speak Irish, is what Audrey would tell us. But our students did have that, have a language that was in common. When we go to Switzerland, Germany, and Italy, they're going to be learning some different languages and seeing those different cultures, which is an amazing opportunity. Task performance in virtual teams, they're learning collaboration skills over there. Various tours that we go on, the kids got to learn, we can flip to the next slide and lead into this. Our students learn from the guides that we visit with, the instructors that they come in contact with, the local residents are even part of this with different places that we visit. They meet different mentors and peers throughout this opportunity, and they can put in unfamiliar situations. When you were in Ireland, the kids got to visit a couple of different production farms, we'll show you those pictures at the end, but they got to interact and be a part of the experience. So when it comes to future-proof skills for our businesses in the area, they're looking for kids that can be adapt, that can adapt to situations, solve problems on the fly. Having hands-on experience improves their overall retention and material. Already in this first two weeks of school, I brought up Ireland from just traveling there and the content that I'm teaching right now, probably 20 times. It's a lot. So the more that I travel, the more our kids travel, the more that dial-out comes up in everyday conversation. So how do outcomes of educational training support this school board's number one goal? You can find this on our website. So ensuring students are prepared academically, personally, and socially for educational transitions, career opportunities, and life responsibilities within the community and the nation and the world. So looking at agriculture, our students are looking at food production. They're looking at how these countries use their land. Okay, sometimes it's similar to how we use our land in the United States, another time it's very different. Fostering innovation, thinking creatively. Our kids have to solve problems we've created today. So thinking about how can we use our technology to make things more productive? We have to feed more people with less land. Addressing global agricultural challenges, food scarcity is huge. Real-world connections, okay, building relationships with kids from other places. In Ireland, they love the United States. Not every country's going to have that same experience, right? So they're going to build those real-world connections and help kind of bridge that gap. International agricultural business, looking at we buy and sell and trade goods all the time. Okay, so that's huge.
And then we chose to look at just a few other subject areas, so English, because that's what I teach. But a lot of the places that we're going to be visiting are sort of like cultural hubs for some of the literary periods that students study. They're also going to have a Swiss folklore experience, which ties into reading and experiencing literature from other cultures. Venice, Italy would be one of our stops, which Othello, Shakespeare's Othello takes place on the streets of Venice, Italy. And I don't know what better way to actually, you know, get kids into Shakespeare than for them to actually be on the streets that it takes place.
I heard the version in Minnesota.
And then also just analyzing some of the cultural effect on the literature as we travel. We also looked at family and consumer science, connecting the culture with cuisine. I know I've talked to Tara a lot about that, and her desire to want to do that as well. But textiles, fashion, and design, obviously, that's different world of the world, nutrition differences, and how different countries view nutrition. And then the family and human development, families operate in different ways throughout the world.
When it comes to social studies, we will be visiting many of the historical landmarks in these countries. The kids get to see geography in action when we're traveling from one part of Germany, wrapping our way all the way down to Italy, back through Switzerland, and back up to Germany to depart for home. They get to see all of that in action. As we travel, they get to see the economic awareness, they have to be able to convert the US dollar to euros and the Swiss franc as we travel on this trip. Looking at political and social perspective, when we were in Ireland, one of the things constantly brought up was global trade. When we visited a lot of the farms in that area, and ultimately how the United States, when you, when you ultimately, when the, when the world gets really hot. Like thinking, when you're just trading globally and you're putting terrorists. Tara, thank you, like, it's magic, it was, it was helping, right there. Terrorists, there it is. They talked about that a lot, and how that impacts them. Global citizenship as a, as a, as a, you know, I don't know if we're, we're very well. Global citizenship at large. When we look at agriculture standards, we pulled out my standards as one of our main examples for tonight. One of my standards, and this actually repeats whether we're talking about animal science, horticulture, natural resources, this magic word agricultural literacy is the word that changes, but that standard actually repeats in every one of my content areas. So students will examine the components, applications, historical development, global implications, future trends, and career opportunities related to agricultural literacy. The learning priority for this is investigating global implications of agriculture. Three different performance indicators to showcase this are identifying types and diversity of the agriculture, food, and natural resource systems on a global scale based on geography, climate, and social constructs. Are going to be seeing that throughout that part of the world. Researching and using geographic and economic data to solve problems in the agriculture, food, and natural resource systems, and researching, examining, and discussing issues and trends impacting EF and our systems on local, state, national, and legal levels. So our kids will ultimately be meeting this standard by traveling to these different countries.
And this is one example. We could have pulled a lot of standards, it would be helpful to be, that would be so interesting. But there is the personal and social aspects as well, gaining the cultural appreciation, collaborating with people from other countries, collaborating just with your peers too, because traveling in a foreign country is, there's, you come across a lot of hurdles that you have to overcome, bigger, huh? Being able to communicate with people who maybe don't speak English or have different views or values than you. The psychological and socio-cultural adaptation and the cross-cultural flexibility, we sort of have an example here. So one of the stops would be St. Mark's Square and St. Mark's Basilica, and there's a dress code when you visit there, not just inside the basilica, but when you're at the square. Visitors have to dress modestly, right, covering their shoulders, chest, and knees, and so on. And it's not an option, right? Like students don't like our dress code, well, they gotta follow this if they're gonna, if they're gonna go there. So it's one of those things where you respect their culture, you respect what they're asking, and it's a good experience for them.
Well, honestly, as we pack for these kind of trips, it is something I have to tell, we have to tell the students in advance, you need to bring X, Y, and Z, because otherwise you are turned away, you can't get, you can't go on site. Ultimately, you have to sit out for that one. And that, then you lose all on opportunities if you're not dressed appropriately.
And then financial literacy, obviously, that having to exchange the currency, but we also talked about having to save for this trip, make payments for this trip, and bring their own money and spend their own money on this trip will mean some of the key parts of this. Well, so we just talked about, you know, some people who say like, well, people can travel in college, but a lot of research actually shows that that's just too late for kids to travel. So the research shows that if students don't travel in high school, they're going to be less likely to take advantage of those opportunities that are offered to them in college.
When it comes to creating access, EF provides a global citizen scholarship for our students to apply for. Doesn't mean they'll get it, not necessarily, but it is an opportunity that students can capitalize on. Every student gets a tour donation page. So when EF makes our students' profiles, they get a QR code that's associated just to their account, and they can send that QR code to their families, their friends, their aunt, whoever, anybody that they want to share that code with, that can contribute directly to their trip, and it impacts nobody else. Pricing and payments, they're dedicated to providing the lowest possible prices and practical payment options, we'll talk more about that on the upcoming slide. And culture, if they travel for everyone, it's something they need this trip for, for their students. So this is where we're looking at going Germany, Italy, and Switzerland. We would be flying in at Frankfurt there, working our way around and back up to Frankfurt, Frankfurt to fly off. The program price for students is four, to get started, starts at $4,249. That's including round trip area, their housing. Am I saying the wrong?
What you're in.
And those are housing. They are provided breakfast and dinner as part of that cost. Students will be required to bring money for a lunch stop as they get to choose their lunch choices. So EF takes upon themselves to order their breakfast and their dinner, so they're trying cultural foods that are unique to the areas we're traveling. And that also covers our full-time tour director and any daily activities, tours, and entrances, entrance fees to attractions that we do. The Swiss fondue evening is something I opted to add on because the, these extra things that we do are an amazing experience for our kids. So that's $129. Local travel protection is $190. One of the advantages to paying for global travel protection is if our students get sick overseas, EF pays their bill in the end. That's an amazing thing, honestly. I may have to flip the bill right away with my credit card and say, we're covering this right now. I submit that receipt to EF, and they will reimburse me that cost, all through their travel protection program. Early enrollment discount, our students that travel for the first time, if they enroll by the deadline EF sets for us, they get a $200 discount. If Dos Henderson chooses to re-enroll in this trip, she gets an additional discount because she's a frequent flyer with me now. Okay, so she gets an additional, I think, $100, $150 discount if she chooses to enroll. EF's piece of line program is free. Total for students is $4,359. Part of why we opted to do three countries instead of just say Switzerland, Switzerland would have been a trip on its own of $6,000 because their country is more expensive. By pairing this with three countries, because Dos is turned to me at the end of Ireland, she's like, Switzerland? Looking at that, it ultimately reduces the cost for our students, and they get to see more places, which is pretty exciting.
And you'll see that it's broken down to, if we can get into the program next month, $186 a month. I think there's some kids who pay more than that a month for Starbucks. So I think it's pretty affordable, it's something to work towards. And I traveled in high school through the trip offered at Sebastopol, and I didn't pay that much less than this, so I was really surprised by how it covered different prices.
Our students do room in groups of four typically is kind of the magic number, or three depending on what the hotel can work with. Adults, if they opt to travel with us, so parents or other community members that want to travel with us, they're always welcome to enroll, their total is increased by $120 because they only have one of the roommates. Or they can adopt, they can choose to have one single room, their costs would just be broken down a little different too. But overall, for an adult to travel, $5,000 really is not bad for three countries.
And this is the detailed itinerary, which we might have in here. They get to visit a lot of different landmarks throughout these countries.
So you go to the back of that, they go to the back office?
Ah, I don't think I was on this, but there, maybe that possibility with, oh, very well. We stop in a lot of these areas, and they give students an opportunity to visit some of the sites around, so there's always that possibility that they can have those kind of attractions on, yes.
So we're in Venice, right?
Yonara, that's really unique to that area. So one of the awesome things is the Swiss folklore evening excursion. That was one of my favorite things we did in Ireland, was we did the Irish folklore experience, and that's dinner, dancing, and just music and a show. It was an amazing experience. And the kids were with the Ireland trip, they got to see, one of the performers was Celtic women, and Susan McFadden performed for them. She's got like a voice of an angel. So it's amazing, the performers that they line up for these kind of experiences is just outstanding.
And you get to go to the top of the Swiss mountain and have like your sound of music playing, you know? And so I think a big question always is, how is the trip going to be fun? So it's a supplementary trip, obviously, right? It's not required, and it's not for every student. Not every student is going to be able to afford it, unfortunately. They can enroll in a payment plan, which makes it more affordable. We are going to offer opportunity, we've got like baggy groceries, right? That's something TadEx is always looking for, and so we will offer that opportunity, we will be there with the kids so that they can earn money towards their trip to do that. We'll also support them in trying to figure it out, right? If they need help budgeting or whatever, we'll be there to help them try to figure that out. We are not going to be, we want to make this clear, we're not going back to the community and asking for money, we're not fundraising, that's not the goal of this trip. Oh, and then other, you know, schools are traveling too, to a lot of different places. And we think that these are probably like upcoming trips that they have, you know, some schools plan them two, three, four years, things.
I wanted to give you some Ireland highlights from this last summer, so I have two different slides here that I'm going to highlight for you. When we first got to Ireland, we stopped in Dublin, we took a walking tour of Dublin and got to see St. Patrick's Cathedral, so here's a picture of all the night helmets and some of their flags. Those flags exist in that church or in the cathedral until they disintegrate and fall off, honestly. They're there an entire life of that flag. They're there the entire life of that, but, um, that's pretty awesome. We explored the Interactive Museum of Irish Immigration. It was very, it was amazing how much pride Ireland takes on all of their descendants. Ultimately, no matter where their Irish descendants ended up in the world, they were highlighted in that epic museum, and that was pretty amazing. We toured the Irish National Study, Arkansas for the Irish Racehorse Experience. I do have a picture, this is one of the resources they had in the Parox. One of the experiences we did at that place was my student, Lane, and I were partnered up for this racehorse experience, and so he had to design his racehorse. Ultimately, looking at genetics, looking at the profile of it, he had to design it. In the end, I didn't include the picture of this, but I had to ride the mechanical horse to the finish line, which was really amazing. So that was a lot of fun. Students spent two days engaging in hands-on learning activities on several local cattle and fruit vegetable farms, going back to the, nope, the yellow one. So behind us here, you can kind of see the strawberries being grown hydroponically there. The gentleman that owns this facility foresees in the future every place in the world is going to grow strawberries hydroponically four feet off the ground because you can control temperature, you can control the amount of water, and your employees do not have to kneel on the ground digging through the strawberries. So that was an amazing thing. They were all at basically chess level when we were harvesting strawberries, and they tasted absolutely insane. The students had the opportunity to learn about the sustainability of oyster farming, and students got to sample their first fresh oyster. They should taste like cucumber if they are fresh, ultimately, which is pretty cool. We toured, got one role in mind, and we were able to watch a sheepdog demonstration. One of the things that owner had promoted to us is diversification is key to a successful business in Ireland. They ultimately had to have multiple ways of making income in order to ensure their sustainability in the long term, which was really amazing. And a lot of the businesses we toured mentioned that multiple times. We toured an apple orchard, and the kids got to see the equipment for cider making and just for all of her different products, her vinegar that she made, apple cider vinegar. Kids got to sample some of those products as well that she had that were fresh and had purchased to take home. On the dairy and beef farms, there, we learned there's a limit on the number of animals they can raise on an acre of land. Rotational grazing is huge there, and the gentleman that we went to, that we went to his dairy farm, the cows, they actually, you remember Ben, some of our area farms that have robotics and everything? These cows are drained, they walk into the facility, and they're waiting to be milked. And when they're milked, they get sent back out to pasture. He resets up which pasture they're going back to, and they know how to walk out where they're going, and they come back in when they're ready. It's just amazing the way this man had this farm and facility set up, just amazing. And his other second income was he built fences. So he had the dairy farm as like a side income, and his primary business was building farm fences. Diversification again. They are the leading, one of the leading producers of baby formula worldwide, which is cool. We ended up taking a walking tour of Galway. Our kids got to see the breathtaking Cliffs of Moher and were able to take a cruise on the River Cora. That was kind of his last-minute addition. Audrey worked out for us, so we got to do something a little extra when we were there. Our kids enjoyed the local cuisine. We were able to meet kids from the other, from Random Lake High School in Wisconsin, as well as from schools in Arkansas and Florida. Picture here on the next slide. The center gentleman right there was our bus driver, Jer. Oh my gosh, that man is a phenomenal driver. We got a couple pinches where you're just like, is he going to be able to back the bus up? He was just absolutely amazing. Audrey is our tour director. She was with us from the start of the trip all the way to the end, as was Jer. These two individuals made our experience absolutely amazing. Had not, you would have never known, these two people had never met each other before this, this interaction. They met each other, apparently, at one point in time, they probably crossed paths with the cruises that come around Ireland and everything. But those two had never actually worked together prior to this. They won't work for yet, but this was their first time. You would have never known the difference. Like, true, they were absolutely amazing people, really. So for me, this was an unforgettable experience, and that's why I'm bringing back another international trip for our kids. It is something these kids will talk about for years, as well as, oh, Mindy has talked about her trip.
Some years later, yeah, so.
Where did you guys go?
Uh, we went to Italy and France.
Absolutely an amazing experience. Overall, we hope you support this international trip that we're proposing to this evening, as hopefully our kids going forward, we'd love to bring you back another trip even next year. We just keep it going year after year, as we find it very valuable to our kids. Give them a year and a half out to pay for their trip, then our goal would be by next fall, we bring you the next one for 2028. It's kind of our goal for this.
Does anyone have questions?
That was a really nice presentation.
Thank you.
Questions by any of them?
How is your trip paid?
So our trip is paid, as you involve six travelers, your chaperones travel free. So every six travelers you have, chaperone travels free. When I went with Ireland with Dawson Lane, I paid $3,000 myself. I am more than willing to pay money to go on these trips, let me tell you that, okay? It's just an added benefit that Mindy and I, we have twelve kids in the home, we go travel free. Or, in this case, we did...
Well, nothing's free.
Well, we still work, we work on the trip, of course, absolutely. But that, our trip would be fully funded if we had twelve. If not, we would prorate it ultimately, so both of us have an affordable trip as well.
Questions for them? Or is there a motion, any of you?
I think well, playing out, the presentation was very detailed. I like the, you know, the interactive, the community, door-to-door, asking for donations. And payments are flexible. Students can start saving for it, and making payments are a very good program.
What's that? I'm showing like when is the school year? Is it like spring break, or is it?
This is July of 2027. It does not impact our kids whatsoever with missing school.
July 2027?
July 2027, so July 20th to the 29th, I think is what we're earmarking of 2027.
You're a half covered.
And we're all invited. Just line it up, we're all invited.
Well, I think based on the presentation and where we're doing it, or I would move to approve the global trip proposal.
Second. Other questions or discussion? All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Good question.
Well done.
Would you consider program profile screening, Mr. O'Carroll?
Yes, so in your packet, I know that Ricky had included some information about what the purpose of this profile sheet is. Basically, it's just an opportunity to put a lot of information about our district in this format. Something that can be shared with the media, it can be shared on our website, it can be handed out to prospective families. The idea would be that that would carry over. We would do profile sheets for each building, as well as student services, so. So I don't know if it will be packaged, if there is a sample of what the district would look like. Yes, it's in there.
Something's worth it, you know?
So the, the other building, something to send.
So this information you're looking for people to move forward with?
I do believe, it's information and then looking for, kind of a proof motion to approve.
I would move to her, that is very important.
One second.
Question for discussion here?
So it can be distributed where? Uh, wait, so in the, it's something that can be used in newsletters, in the newspaper, something to include in here. You can include it in packets when we have prospective families wanting to move. So there's a number of different.
Well, there's Scott.
Hi.
Post, Carrie. I'm going to back up a minute, a second, and apologize. I'll have to remember that we have been here to the food and lunch special, the special where Wise. I probably should ask him what he thought about the trip for students.
Well, as a student, I would love, if they were allowed an opportunity like that. Sadly, I won't be here for it, but I know I would, I know a lot of students would love to do that. I've been there since early, lots definitely travel a lot, if you love it. I know like personally she would love that, so. I know she couldn't be more oriented to just, I can't, but firstly, I think it's a wonderful activity and something that should be considered.
Do you want for two years as well?
Thank you, thank you, Dan. I had a prayer to keep more of a...
Do you have a couple of early graduation requests?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Perry. So we have two dynamic young men. First of all, I can't say enough about these two, two young men and who they are and what they've done here in Sebastopol. Both, both Austin Pottles and Gavin Jones have positioned themselves to be eligible to graduate early. Their letters, very well-written letters are in your packet. Austin, Austin wanting to pursue a career in masonry, and as you've probably read, you know, he's been doing that since he's 14, he has some pretty high aspirations of owning his own business one day. And this is really important, and if you've ever spent any time talking to Austin, he's incredibly passionate about what he does in his career. And Gavin is wanting to graduate and to work on a farm, as he had mentioned in his letter. He was offered a job in early August. Also tremendous young man, positioned himself to be in this position. I think the thing that I really love that we do at Sebastopol, as we do at St. Louis further out, and when students are ready to graduate early, get in the workforce, I think it's important that we promote that, and both of these students, I couldn't be more proud of them and who they are. So I'd really like you to consider allowing a early graduation for both Austin Pottles and Gavin Jones.
Is there a motion?
I have a vote.
For Austin Pottles and Gavin Jones, please keep them. Questions?
Very impressive letters, and it sounds like these are two young men who have a well-off line career path. It's committed.
Any young men want to speak? All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion, Carrie. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other boys soccer people that have a program? Sorry, program, if you all have done that, quite can be used. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proper team's time. Second.
Any other new soccer player?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, he's here.
That is here. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion, Carrie. Then we have a resolution authorizing transfer of funds to the establishment of a NESCROR account with respect to the deficits of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds dated March 19, 2007. If we'll let Natasha Ross explain that to us.
Okay. We spoke about these, the deficits last meeting, and went through a couple of different options for the board. The board decided on the option, which I think provides the district with the most flexibility going forward, which would be an option that allows us to pay off some of our debt at the middle to late maturities. And it gives us more flexibility the next time we go out for referendum with our funding situation, to know what's going on in, you know, 2028. So this option, and it's been tweaked just a little bit from August because we had to wait for, you know, real numbers and real interest savings to come in, gives us a savings of about $557,000. So still a really good interest savings for the district. And so I would like you to, I recommend that you approve the resolution 2526-01, authorizing this deficits, and that deficits would take place on October 1st.
Do you have questions or discussion? Is there a certain way you want that motion, you want it, just the way it's written here?
Yes. Yeah? You want to approve resolution, da-da-da, and then just read it out?
I would move to approve Resolution 2526-01, Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds to the establishment of a NESCROR account with respect to and the deficits of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds dated March 19, 2019.
One second.
Questions or discussion?
Is this a one-time, like, or?
This is a one-time thing. This is our third deficits. But each time you have to make a motion, you go through the process.
What would you do, your turn?
This is probably the last one.
All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Post, Ms. Carrie. Then we have the propane bin. She had it in her packet, it's just a little installation, air conditioning gas.
I know we accept the, 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 the. Second.
Question for discussion, all of you, say aye.
Aye.
Post, Ms. Carrie. We have seven, three boys, and a couple of girls.
Make a motion to approve the Ireland market order, seven, eight, nine, twelve. Second.
Questions or discussion, all of you, say aye.
Aye.
Post, Ms. Carrie. Our, the only meeting is on October 15. Annual meeting is on October 22nd, at 6:30. And then we have a special meeting October 22nd, right after the annual meeting. And that would be for?
That would be for any follow-up we need after the meeting, or particularly the line of credit that we will need.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.
Second. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion, Carrie.